January 12, 2022. Notice of this meeting was emailed to the press and the current of Ag Harper Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Ag Harper Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. There's a live mic somewhere.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Delabarka.
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Here.
Ms. Hyman.
Here.
Mr. Ireland.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Seppi.
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Here.
And Mrs. Solagi.
Here.
Okay, we'll stand for the flag salute. And after the flag salute, we'll have a moment of silence for Mr. James Pulaski, who is a security guard in the district.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Misses Bonjourno. Mr. Delabarka.
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Yes.
Ms. Hyman.
Yes.
Mr. Ireland.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Seppi.
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
And Mrs. Solagi.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, here we go. Okay, welcome everyone. What an exciting evening it is this evening to see everyone here present at the board meeting. It's for great things. It's to celebrate what we do here at Ag Harper Township, and that is to provide opportunities for students, to celebrate how students excel, and it's all about student achievement. And we have some great news tonight to share with you. And with a little help of my friends called coaches, we're going to get through this program. All right, so before we begin, with some of the recognitions, the teams that are here, very, very important recognition that happens every year, the county academic recognition. It is where the county superintendent recognizes academic achievement in schools, middle schools and high schools across the county. And for our size of our district, we had six middle school students that were recognized and five high school students. So I would like for those students to come on up tonight because they are here. I know our middle school students are here to receive a certificate from me, the superintendent, to show how much we appreciate your academic achievement as well as you being an Ag Harper Township student. So can I have from Alder Avenue Middle School, Carter Chu and Paige McQuain, come on up. And from Fernwood Avenue, Olivia Liang, Belina Zhang, and William Eng. Certificate reads, certificate of academic achievement as the student's been recognized for academic excellence in the middle school for 21-22 school year. And these folks are the top of their class. So great job in the efforts that you put forward. We're very, very proud of their achievement, and they're all going to attend Ag Harper Township High School, and we look for the great things that they're going to do in their high school years. So congratulations and congratulations to your parents. High school students are very busy this evening. Brian Zhang, Kevin Lin, Tar Khan, and Ally Severin, and Shahid Mamat. They've also received academic recognition. If anyone is here in the audience who decided to come, no, they're busy preparing for graduation, but we recognize their achievement. And that's everybody right there. We were at the Carrot House back in May, and the students received a brunch and recognition from various entities in the county. So great job again, very, very proud. Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to girls' track and field. This is the high school level. This is Coach here. There she is. Come on up here, Coach. So great things in track and field. We have individual accomplishments this year, and this is Coach Erica Vasquez, and she's going to, I don't know if you have any of your assistants here, but we like to highlight them as well. That's okay. And she's going to present three of her runners, throwers, jumpers, a certificate from superintendent. It's athletic award for individual championships. Okay, and I'll turn over the mic to you.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. Thank you very much for honoring our girls. They did an amazing job this season. Three of our young ladies that are being honored tonight. First, we have Lindsay Taylor. She is the Cape Atlantic League individual champion in the 3,200 meter run. Next, we have Alexa Ali. She is also a senior. She's one of my captains. She is the Atlantic County individual champion in the 200 meter run. And finally, we have Adeline Umflit. She is the Atlantic County champion in the pole vault. She's also one of our captains, and she also broke the school record in the pole vault, jumping nine feet, six inches. Again, thank you very much, Dr. Grugio, Mrs. Solagi, and members of the Board of Education, and everyone that came out tonight to honor all of our young athletes and scholars.
As everyone knows, we're such a large district, and when these great things happen, you know, I tell the coaches and teachers, send all the great things that are going on to me, and whatever chance we get to recognize achievement in these areas is so, so important. So again, congratulations, girls. Thanks for putting those uniforms on, the black and silver, and representing Ag Harper Township High School and our school district and the great things that you do. Thank you. See, Mr. Rutledge here, Athletic Director, Assistant Athletic Director, Ms. Perron, High School Principal, Ms. Patty Connor, and Principal-to-be, Ms. Jackie Carrigno, here to support the students as they are very proud of them as well. So if you folks want to come up, come on up to join me. If not, you could just listen. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to softball. I know they were out in the field running a camp this evening. Are they here yet?
There's like two of us.
You know what? I think we'll wait for Coach, okay? Let's move on. Okay, giving it all away. Boys' track and field. Where's the vibrant Mr. Ryan Smith? So, boys' track and field, always making us proud. They got some great things going here in the Cape Atlantic League, Atlantic County, South Jersey, Group Four sectionals, and we have lots of athletes to honor tonight. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Coach Smith, and I'll get the certificates.
Alan, do I need to use this?
No, you don't. Alan said yes.
Oh, Alan. I know Alan. I taught Alan. What's up, man? Really? I do? All right. I guess I'll keep it right here. Thank you very much for having us, Dr. Grugio, everybody on the Board of Education. It's great to be back. Our last time win in South Jersey Group Four was 2019. It is our fourth overall outdoor sectional championship, South Jersey Group Four. We won in 1917 and 13, and it is our 10th overall as a program between winter and spring winning South Jersey. So we're very proud of these student athletes. We had 82 boys on our team this year. Eighty-two. The breakdown of that was 42 JV and 40 varsity. So a lot of young men out there that were getting the job done on the track and in the field that, you know, just never cease to amaze us coaches. Speaking of those coaches, I'd like to bring up two of my assistant coaches. Class of 2012 EHTHS, now a high school history teacher, Tom McLaughlin's here tonight, everybody. Thank you. Then we grab this dude from Ocean City. He got a job himself at Fernwood Avenue Middle School teaching STEM. This is J.J. Philongieri, coaches the Throes. So these guys, along with four of our volunteer coaches who are not here tonight, take care of these 82 young men, and we have a lot going on. There's stuff at the field, there's stuff on the track, and there's so many different areas that, you know, we have going on. I'm very, very thankful for them and their help as we move forward. So, you know, what are we doing here? I guess now, all right, individuals first. All right, so these young men were successful in what we call is our championship season. And our championship season starts with Atlantic County in mid-May, and this is our, it's our sixth, fifth, sorry, fifth Atlantic County championship in a row as a team. So we are very thankful that we have the best team in Atlantic County, and it is also our sixth Cape Atlantic League championship in a row. We have a current Cape Atlantic League dual meet win streak of 51 straight meets won for teams in our league, so we are very happy to be one of the top teams in our area. Thank you. So right on cue here, underneath the screen, we have tonight Ahmad Fogg. Ahmad Fogg was the South Jersey sectional winner in the long jump and triple jump. He was your Cal champion in the long jump and triple jump, and he finished second. It was, this is really making me upset because he finished first at New Jersey Group Four States, but he was tied for first. And then they went back to like a previous jump, and his wasn't as good as the other guy. So he came in second, but we're going to call it a first in New Jersey Group Four. Ahmad Fogg. He's only a junior too. He's only a junior, which is really awesome. Next, we're going to bring up Malachi Wesley, who was a South Jersey sectional champion in the 110 meter hurdles. Malachi's run of that night with 1393 broke a school record from 2009. So his time at that meet was the overall best time ever performed at a South Jersey sectional championship, and that is so, he made history at that meet. He's also the Cal champion, Atlantic County champion in the 110 meter hurdles. Put your hands together for Malachi Wesley. He will be continuing his athletic career somewhere next year. We thought it was somewhere, but when you run a time like that, a bunch of Division One schools come knocking on your door. So he's holding out right now. He's holding out, so we're happy for him. I believe he was also part of our EHT, our four-by-400 meter relay, which I'm going to bring them up right now. Chris is here, Chris Manzo, Chase and his DJ in the house. He is not, well, Chris and Chase, come on up. We'll clap for you in a second. These two young super sophomores, we call them, were part of the four-by-400 meter relay South Jersey Group Four champions. Give them a round of applause. Chris and Chase. And I believe our last member, DJ Gurman, who was a part of that winning four-by-400, he was also second place in the 100, 200, and long jump. He's playing basketball right now, so, at the high school, is a big member of our high school basketball team. So again, one more round of applause here for these champions. Now, oh, sorry. Me? Get in there? I don't want to get in.
Come on, sweetie.
I don't want to be caught with a microphone in my hand. It's embarrassing. Okay, so now we are going here, okay, to our next group of champions, okay? And we're going to first bring up a young man who is a high jumper, also stolen from the basketball team because he's here tonight because he's a senior though. So we're very happy to get him. Last year, we had a large part of our basketball team come out and join us, and we all know their success from the indoor season. But Isaiah was the Cal champ in the high jump, Atlantic County champion, and was a member of our state champion team, and he was a participant at Mida Champs this weekend. He medaled for a sixth-place finish at New Jersey Mida Champions this past weekend. Put your hands together for senior Isaiah Glenn. Isaiah will be playing basketball next year at Bryn Athens College in Pennsylvania. Next up, we have more champions here. James Mahana is a shot putter here tonight. He won the Cape Atlantic League in the shot put, Atlantic County champion. He was second at South Jersey Group Four. He was second at New Jersey Group Four, and 13th at Mida Champs this weekend, our shot And these guys live together. John Mahana was also a Cal champion in the javelin, a medal winner for us in South Jersey Group Four in the javelin, as well as a participant in New Jersey Group Four States, John Mahana, ladies and gentlemen. These brothers and twins will be playing football next year at Delaware Valley College. So you're getting a trend here that, you know, track and field being one of the most versatile sports that we have at our high school, you know, we take pride in taking, not taking, but borrowing our athletes from other programs and just making real success out of it. And last but not least, we have a junior for us, Ryan Taylor, who was the Atlantic County champion in the 3,200 meter run. Ryan Taylor, ladies and gentlemen. He's coming back. Love these seniors, but also love these juniors that are coming back and the super softs. Come on in, everybody. We're all friends here. Come on. Come on, we got space somewhere. Somewhere there's space. There's a chair right here next to this guy, all right? He's got the camera though. Come on in. Come on. All good. Okay. All right, Coach, I'm going to hand you this. Now we're going to bring up all our members of our team, and we, like I just told you, we have a large team. So we're going to back up, guys, back up so we can get these guys in here. All right, we're blocking these young ladies right here. Sorry. Sorry about that. But the guys that, you know, we just brought up a bunch of champions, but it's the guys that are a part of our team that make us a successful team. You know, we take pride in coming to track meets with a full bus and 40-some kids at track meets, and everybody's always like, you know, all these other teams have like these matching warmups, and these other teams have really nice tents, and I'm like, you know what we have? We have EHT, and we have a bunch of guys from different programs, and we might not be flashy, but we're really successful. And that's, you know, that's kind of what we take pride on as a program and as a team, and I really appreciate it to everyone on this team, all right? Here we go. We ready for this, Dr. Grugio? So these guys got the round of applause, but we have to be efficient here, all right? Is everyone ready to be efficient? So when we bring up these next young men, I want everyone, after I say their name, to clap once in unison, okay? All right, does everyone understand that? So you got to be ready right now. So people in the back, pay attention, all right? Anthony Cologne, pay attention for this. Come on. Come on, man. All right, so we're going to practice. Ready? Everyone ready? Get your hands ready. Put down your kids. Put down your camera. All right. All right, ready? Let's practice. Dr. Grugio. Mr. Kevin Rutledge. All right, I think we're doing okay. What do you think? All right? Good? All right. All right, here we go. Let's bring them up, and they might not be here, but we're going to acknowledge them anyway. Ready? Marco Algarin. You better start flipping, Coach. Ricky Axelson. Yeah, you might need some help. Ayub Azigzal. We're three for three on people being here too, by the way. Three for three. Ryan Bailey. Yeah, look at that. We're doing good. Here we go. Evan Bevelakwa. You look good, man. Pants. Aaron was second place in South Jersey Group Four in the triple jump and high jump, as well as second place in New Jersey Group Four in the triple jump, and was a participant this weekend in New Jersey Mida Champs. After this was printed. All right, here we go. Javelin thrower, top six in the South Jersey Group Four, Sean Dever. Yeah, we're still good, right? We're still good? Osea, we can just call him OC Dia. I didn't do nicknames on these certificates. That would be, all right, that's good. He's already up here. Junior Ahmad Fogg. Come on, people, you're losing it here. Come on. John Fox. DJ Gurman. Isaiah Glenn. Chris Griffin. Chris was a top-six medal winner for us in South Jersey Group Four and a participant in New Jersey States, as well as shot putter Cody Griggs. Okay, you got to pay attention to what I'm saying. Whenever I say a name, you have to follow with the clap. Come on, pay attention. Cody's going to be throwing the shot put next year at Stockton University. Amir Halim. Zaki Holmes-Meiffield. Whoa, we got hyphens here. Let's try that again. Zaki Holmes-Meiffield. How the, disrespect the hyphen. Cam Korga. We're killing it on participation right now. I wasn't, this is awesome. Great turnout. Dylan Liang. Yeah, well, he's not here. Theo Lucy. Oh, maybe we're just heavy in the hot, in the front half. James Mahana. He's already up there. John Mahana. Chris Manzo. Chase Mazer. Graham McBane. Chris Minshaw. He is here. Give him a second. Justin Moore. Matt Robertson. Ryan Taylor. Aaron Wagner. He is here. Malachi Wesley. And that's it, okay? Round of applause for your South Jersey Group Four sectional champions. Take their picture. Congratulations to all the other people who have been honored here tonight. Girls' softball, our girls' track and field athletes, phenomenal. Love the stuff that's going on here at EHT. Thank you very much for having me. I'm not going to steal this mic now that you gave it to me, but Alan, you're awesome, man. Thank you, everybody.
Gentlemen, thank you for attending tonight. It means a lot to me. It means a lot to the Board of Education. When we issue these certificates, it is very, very important, whether you frame them or you give them to your parents or you stick them in a book. It's just that you are standing here to be recognized for the performance and the efforts that you put forth to represent Ag Harper Township High School, and that means so much to me. And I wish you the best in your endeavors going on to college, or if you're back on the team next year, hopefully you'll be standing here again, receiving a certificate and being proud for Ag Harper Township High School. So thank you.
Wash these clothes because our banquet's tomorrow night. Kind of the same attire. Wash them. All right, let's go. Come on, move it or lose it here. We're faster than this.
That's what I hear. All great stuff. I mean, our teams have been so productive this year. It's so great to be here to acknowledge their success. So talking about success, we're moving on to girls' softball, and Coach, looks like she's here now. Pull up Coach Troster.
Hi.
Hello. So the girls' softball team has had an outstanding year, going undefeated. Come on up, Chris. Going undefeated in the Cape Atlantic League, being Cape Atlantic League champions, South Jersey Group Four champions, sectional champions, and making that trip to the state final, which we're proud that they were there. I still have problems with being on turf and all that bit, but we had a great game. It went into extra innings, and it was a heartbreaker, but we stand here very, very proud of all that was accomplished up to that point. So we can't let that moment in that extra inning define the season because it was an absolutely amazing season, and I'm going to have Coach Troster share that with you. So we'll begin with recognizing your All-Stars and then your team, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for the board and everybody for honoring us. It's awesome that we do this for all the athletes. So I wouldn't do or be able to do anything or as much as we do with the girls without the rest of my staff, so my varsity assistant, Coach Bernard, Ralph Bernard, sorry, can you come up? Larissa Botten, Sean Mateo, and Dave Delray. Are you coming? Are you stuck in the back? They're on their way. They're navigating. All right, so thank you to all of them, and just so that you know, I have some of the girls here tonight, but a lot of them are doing things for the biggest showcase that they have in New Jersey for all the college recruiting. So that is this coming weekend, and a lot of the girls are at practices, and thanks for that. So my Cal South Jersey All-Star, so these were our first team members, Madison Biddle, Madison Dollar, and Kayla Dollar.
I get to give Coach Troster her certificate because she's just been named the Press of Atlantic City a Coach of the Year, so congratulations. Addison Biddle was named Player of the Year, and Ag Harper Township High School softball was named Team of the Year, and that's amazing to get all three of those recognitions from the Press of Atlantic City, and well deserved. Well deserved. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into this year, so I'll hand it over to you again to recognize your players, whether they're here or not, please call their names.
So freshman Sofia Spatako. Lee Barnes. Dean Colbert. Madison Dollar. Jordan Miller. Caitlin Rosario. Hiki Schlemmer. Morgan Voight. Deanna Waltersen, who's also representing us in the Carpenter Cup, and the Tri-Cape went 3-0 yesterday in the Carpenter Cup, so they're going to be going to the quarterfinals on Wednesday. Madison Biddle. Sarah Hickey. Ava Ivy. Shelby Parker. Natalia Stewart. Julia Sweeney. Anna Valentina. Jesse Alkins. McNary Cologne. Kayla Dollar. Madison Glick. Stephanie Henhoza. Emily Liskowski. Riley Martini. Gigi Mermilli. Ava Callio. Mary Delray. And Daisy Loges. Once again, thank you so much, and thank you to all the girls. You guys put in so much work this year, and it was an absolutely fantastic season to be a part of. It's really nice when you enjoy going to practice every single day and working with your athletes.
Thank you. Please, again, thank you for attending tonight, and be very, very proud of all your accomplishments when you put on the black and silver and you represent the high school. It makes us proud as well, the efforts that you give, the efforts that your parents put out to get you to and from practice on those Saturdays and Sundays and nighttimes and the trip we took up north. But it's all about, you know, the effort that you put in and the product that you produce. So congratulations again. Very, very proud of you. Thank you. Mr. Rutledge is going to close out the spring athletic season.
First of all, coaches, I'd just like to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Incredible season, incredible job with your kids. You know, I preface it by saying, you know, everyone says, oh, do you miss coaching? And I miss coaching with all my heart, but I look at my coaches as my team, and I couldn't be more proud of not only the job you did on the competition field, but also with the athletes themselves. You know, Coach Troster mentioned quickly how she enjoyed going to practice every day, and there's a lot of people that would come by and watch these kids compete and just fall in love with her team, with the way they compete, the way that they interact, and the way that they respect every aspect of the event. From track, you know, this spring season...
From track, you know, this spring season for me is my first spring season here. You know, coming in, I knew a lot of the expectations that came into this track program, and Coach Smith and his incredible record. You know, I believe he's 97 and 6 in dual meets over 10 seasons. That's pretty impressive. So... But again, parents, thank you guys for supporting our coaches. You know, that's a big part of this whole project, making sure that when our coaches put together the expectations, you know, those are supported at home. Because again, these guys have nothing but the best intentions for your children. So, again, guys, thank you for an incredible season, boys and girls, and I hope that next year, we can top what we did this year.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Okay, we're moving on to our Heart Heroes this evening, and the supervisor of Health, Physical Education, COVID Research, Ms. Karen Semet. She's gonna have a presentation. Atlantic Care, right?
So, Atlantic Care is here to present to us a grant that the nurses and I wrote for new AEDs for all of our 10 buildings. So, Atlantic Care, please come up to the stage. We thank you so much for your generous donation. Personally, I know two people here, Ronnie and Christine, and I think Ronnie's gonna say a little bit about the Heart Heroes program.
Thank you all for inviting us. I have to say Karen is pretty amazing. We did the COVID clinics together, we did the AEDs together, and the COVID clinic here in the high school just went without any flaws. We were really concerned in the beginning, didn't know how many children we would get and families we would get, but she really did a great job, so a little kudos to you. On that same note, you know, my colleagues and I are here to say that we have presented AEDs for your school, and obviously, AEDs can save a life and are an important part of school safety. So, you will have new ones in each one of your schools. We're able to do this by community giving funding to the foundation, and the foundation recognizes Atlantic Care's healthy schools, healthy children, as well as our Heart Heroes. So, this was one of our grants this year, and EHT does a ton of grants with us, which we really enjoy having them as a partner. Like I said, not only have we partnered with our Grants of Healthy Schools, but also our COVID clinics, and usually any other resources we have. So, we appreciate your partnership, look forward to working with you. And again, we wanna thank all of you for the job you do in health and wellness with your students, staff, and faculty. It's real important to have not only AEDs, but areas like the COVID clinic to give people an opportunity that may not be able to get them, that want to be vaccinated, so they can be vaccinated. So, you really do go above and beyond, and we appreciate the health and wellness you bring to all of your schools. So, thank you.
In touch. Thank you. On a second note, I would like, without getting upset, to honor my 14 school nurses that have done a phenomenal job these last two years. Perseverance, dedication, they were a frontline worker, and we've picked each other up day in, day out, weekends, holidays. So, I would like to personally honor all 14 nurses. I'm gonna start with the high school. If you're here, please come up. Rebecca Camp. Erin Harrington. Laura Wren. Your stain. Melanie Charlton. Christina Summers. Jeannie Roberts. Mary Yakita. Michelle Porter. Tara Leahy. No, for the next one. Judy O'Rourke. Who's retiring on Friday. Randy Conover. Mary K. Nell. Ginger Palermo. Two other nurses that could not be here tonight, Elizabeth Derbyshire and Andrea Bradshaw. So, please, give them a standing ovation for an incredible job that they have done. And please don't call out sick tomorrow. And please don't call out sick tomorrow. Please, if you're here, please take an AED back to your building, and again, thank you for an incredible job. Thank you.
Ladies, I echo Karen's sentiments. Great job over the last couple of years. It really defined your job description. It was nothing that we could have predicted. You jumped right in, did what you had to do, and made us look good, all in keeping the health, safety, and welfare of our staff and students in mind. And we appreciate your effort and extra hours put forth in taking care of us. So, Karen, oh, you got stuck with three, okay. You can take the flowers, too. Alright, so, thank you very much. So, moving on to our Board of Education Student Representation. Each year, we have students who represent the, the high school and the student body in general, because now they're seeking information K through 12, and sharing it with the Board of Education in the public meeting. So, at this time, President Solagi will come down and join me as we recognize our current student reps, who are, come on up, Madeline Coyle. There you go, Barbara. And Lauren Wenzel. We appreciate your service. The high school appreciates you representing the student voice, and for joining us here as Board of Education members. Hopefully, you've learned a lot, and in the future, may look to run for the, for a Board of Education to serve on the dais one day. So, we appreciate your service. On behalf of the Board of Education, it's been a great time, and we congratulate you in your upcoming graduations.
Thank you for joining us a couple Tuesday nights a month. I think you've learned different things than what you learned in your classes. So, it's been a pleasure to have you with us, and you've blessed us with a breast of what goes on in the high school. Good luck to you and your endeavors.
Okay, so, we're gonna let you hold on to them. We'll let them hold on to them for the meeting. How about that? So, you can look at them. But we're gonna need them back, because on Friday night of graduation, you'll get presented those same plaques, so that the 3,000 people that attend can see that as well. Okay? So, we'll let you have it for the next hour or so. Okay, filling their seats come September are two new representatives from the high school, and we welcome them. Camelia Alfaro, are you here this evening? Yes, she is. Come on up. And Samir Chalhuri, are you here? There we go. So, here we go, our new student reps. Congratulations for being selected and for representing the student body. And come September, here's our two newest board members. Alright, so, thank you. You guys could chat and fill them in. Okay, so, Anaya is up. A little thank you for all you do. Barbara, I think you're gonna stay here till... You stay. And the mic is yours.
Do I have to click out of here? Have we got it? Awesome, thank you. Okay, so, you saw the academia, you saw the athletes, you saw the pulse of the nurses, and how do we operate the schools? With the support staff. Support staff being transportation. Gotta get the kids to and fro, right? Gotta feed them while they're here, breakfast and lunch. We have to have a facility with air most times, clean, with nice shiny wax floors, right? And we have to have the interweb, right? All those things are such a huge necessity. So, tonight, we're gonna also recognize a lot of people who we couldn't have done it without. So, we're gonna start with our facilities department. We haven't had a director in quite a while. I play director, if you wanna come on up. Jason Haynes and Kevin Zitt, the two supervisors, who have worked tirelessly to make sure everything just kept on going. These are the first two up here, sorry. Right here, if you don't mind. Mr. Dick and Mr. Haynes have kept the buildings going, projects going, almost like without interruption. You don't see like how the sausage is made, but let me tell you, there are some pretty good sausage makers there, they really, some good chefs, and they really do keep the ball rolling with us. So, I just wanted to thank you, on behalf of the Board of Education. And we have cloths for you, if I just wanna... Sorry, I'm catching my breath here. So, for the '21-'22 school year, so it has their name on it, and it says, "With greatest appreciation for extraordinary performance, and going above and beyond for the Egg Harbor Township School District." So, we just wanna thank you both very much. Next, thank you both, thank you both very much. Next, we have Michelle Fisher, our Director of Transportation. So, Michelle and our Transportation Department team keep the wheels on the bus going round and round with innovation. And we use some trigger words, and I hope you don't have PTSD throughout this presentation. We deliver food, hybrid schedules, masks on buses, staffing, parent contracts, and new tiers. And above all else, when you think you're exhausted, we said, "Hey, Michelle, next year, let's change the schedule for all the schools." And she stepped up, her and her department have made strides in the past two years, and we really just wanna thank you very much for taking the wheel. Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Beck. More trigger words. Full-time kindergarten, full-time preschool, these are wonderful things. For the Food Service Department, it was a whole new menu. We served over 1.6 million meals over the last two years by bus, by curbside, and I almost wanna say by aeroplane, but it didn't happen that way. But we did every which way we could to make sure that the kids got a chance to eat. We maintain school safe temperatures, which is very difficult when you're curbside, and there's milk, but we figured that out. A resource for the state, his expertise is second to none. The state calls us all the time. "Tom, what's EHT doing? How are we gonna get through this?" And keeping up morale in the department, huge. They've been working tirelessly. And at some point in the district, somebody got to stay home. Not our food service workers, they had to keep on feeding, and they were here every day. So, I do appreciate Tom's leadership, and our wonderful Food Service Department were the ingredients needed for the nourishment of our students over the last few years. Thank you, Tom. The interweb. So, more trigger words. One-to-one devices, hotspots. We got some serious grant money to help fund a lot of the things we had to do, such as go virtual, have headsets, WAN upgrades, talked about all the time, projectors, hybrid schedules, and then redo hybrid schedules, and let's redo hybrid schedules, and board meeting hybrid. And if all else fails, let's do a survey. The expertise of our ITS department and staff consistently meet the needs of our staff and students, and keep our district online and cyber safe. So, thank you, Kevin. And how do we do all of that and keep track of it all? Jamie Shoemaker. The business of school is my right hand, sorry. With her institutional knowledge, her organization, to be sure that we consistently comply with the departments of blah, blah, I'm not gonna read them. There's so many different regulations, mandates, policies, compliance, all that we have to do in the business office, and 23 years of her expertise will be missed. Thank you for everything. And happy summer.
And we need a standing ovation for all of them. Okay, one more before we go here. Let's see, where are we? Slideshow loading. So, again, thank you all for all that you do. We appreciate your efforts each and every day, and especially over the last couple of years. I know, again, the job description and expectations that changed on a whim, and was constantly a phone call, "Can you do this? Can you do that?" And you folks made it happen. So, we are not what we are without you. So, appreciate it. Alright, so, one more thank you. To Principal Patty Connor, who has been in the district for 31 years, and the board recognizes that she has come to almost every board meeting since being principal, and to represent her high school, and because she's interested in the school district. So, to a teacher, supervisor, assistant principal, and principal of the high school, who is retiring in a couple of days, thank you for all that you do, and have fun. Best wishes. Okay, and that, that is all. That's a whole lot of recognition, a whole lot of great things going on, and you should be proud, you should be proud of the school district that you are a part of, because these are the great things that go on in our school district. And I tell you, each and every year, I stand up here, and I present to the Board of Education, 98% of the stuff we do is positive. It's positive. So, go ahead and put that on Facebook. Because that's the stuff. That's the majority. That's the good stuff that's going on, and it's all right here, and you can see that. And then, there's probably more that we need to recognize. Send it my way, and we most certainly will. But we are proud to be Egg Harbor Township, and I stand here very proud of the superintendent, and I know as board members you are as well. You have a lot to be proud of, you have a lot to govern, there's a lot going on, but it's success. So, thank you. Mrs. Solagi, that concludes my report for this evening.
Certainly was a special night with a lot of special people. Okay, ladies, this is your final meeting here, anyway.
So, as the school year comes to a close, many classes at the high school are doing big final projects. On June 10th, physics classes put their final projects to the test. In the weeks prior, students used their knowledge of buoyancy and design to create scale boat models made only of duct tape and cardboard. Students then raised their boats in the high school pool. On June 16th, art history, AP art history students took an end-of-year field trip to Philadelphia Museum of Art to view historical art concepts that they'd learned throughout the school year. On Wednesday of that same week, the high school's multicultural club had a fun day to end a year of hard work. Students brought cultural food and dressed in traditional clothing that represented their heritage. Pictures of this celebration can be found on the high school's weekly newsletter. And lastly, as this is our final board meeting as student representatives, I'd like to thank the board and administration for giving me this opportunity to share some of the successes of our wonderful student body. Thank you.
I usually do sports news, but there's not much of that left with a week of school left, so I just wanted to put out some graduation reminders. Our graduation is June 24th, this Friday, at 5:10. And guests who want to watch should arrive at Miller and Alder, and then can take a shuttle to the high school. And anyone unavailable to attend but would still like to watch can watch a livestream that is available on the school website. And I'd also like to follow in Lauren's lead and say thank you to the board and to the district for providing us this opportunity to learn and grow as students.
Okay, now, we're gonna open to the public, and this is for agenda items only. Does anybody have anything? Okay, then we'll move along to finance and operations.
Our last meeting was June 7th. In attendance were Mrs. Solagi, Mrs. Bonjorno, Ms. Anaya.
Ms. Anaya, and Dr. Grecio. We discussed transportation. The committee discussed the increase in salary, as discussed while the budget process was being presented to the policy committee. And it should be, it will be on the June agenda. The committee also discussed contracts for non-public schools to be contracted out, as well as some special education runs as needed. But the focus remains on our own student attending our own schools, our own school. Food service, the committee discussed the free and reduced lunch, not being extended by the federal government, but the state of New Jersey may extend the free lunches to those who qualify for reduced lunches. Once we have more information, the Administration will make a formal recommendation to the Board regarding next year's pricing for breakfast and lunch programs. The Administration is also working hard on finding a solution to summer meals for those children attending summer programs. Ms. Anaya discussed the facilities vacancies and timeline of interviews and appointments. The committee also discussed the fiscal impact of changes to the 2022-23 budget as it relates to the EHTEA, the MOA, out-of-district placement, breakage, and salary adjustments. The full Board will have an itemized transfer for approval in July to reconcile all the changes for the 22-23 budget year. And several items were discussed with the committee, as well as recognition for the next board meeting. And that concludes my report. Uh, Ms. Anaya, do you have any updates on any of that?
So no updates on that, but I do have board member questions that were submitted the Friday before the board meeting, and were answered for clarification prior to action tonight. So we have the bills for payment on the rooftop-mounted storage, what the clarification of what that project is. And that's been discussed for filter changes to be able to store filters and supplies on the roof of the high school. Instead of having to have a convey, basically a convoy of staff, feeding it up through the, you know, staff, passing to staff, taking hours just to load it onto the roof. They'll actually have to be able to store it there and work from a storage unit, similar to what's under the bleachers. The hiring and retention grant bonus. The state of New Jersey provided a retention grant for childcare staff. Ms. Boyd was able to apply for funding for some talent staff to retain them. And the state requires us to pay them out by check. So normally, we pay all staff out of payroll. But because it was a grant, it went through regular bills list. There's a question on the agreement with Gateway Head Start. Gateway is a partner that receives federal and state programs for Head Start programs. It's encouraged to participate with them. This year, they had two rooms and had a successful program. Next year, they're expanding to three rooms, which is on this agenda. And that, I believe, concludes the finance section. Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion for 8.2.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman? Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Motion for 8... 8.3 through 8.27.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Curriculum? Mr. Price?
Okay, thank you. The curriculum meeting was on June 7th, 22, at 7 o'clock PM at the Board of Education offices. Attending was Ms. Borgerano, Mr. Delabarka, and myself, Mr. Price, Lily Moss. Agendas discussed were professional development, field trips, and textbook approval list. Informational topics shared and discussed were around curricular resources, athletic booster camps, and summer reading. Updates from the previous curriculum committee were also discussed, including eighth-grade recognition and promotion practices. Conclusions were reached. The committee would like to discuss possible ways to mark the transition from eighth grade to high school, and communicate clearly with all stakeholders about such events. There were no further discussions, ongoing discussions, none at this time. The committee will continue to review curricular initiatives throughout the development and completion of summer curriculum work. Next time and place of the meeting, August 9th, 7 o'clock PM at Slave Ball Primary. And there's no July meeting. And we're going to discuss possible topics. We'll discuss summer curriculum updates, and instituting High School Parents Club and Senior Trip. So if anybody, if Ms. Moss or anybody has anything to add to that, or any of this, that would be great. If not, that concludes my report.
I don't have anything to add, but I also did have a question that came in from the Board of Education about a field trip for out-of-state travel for next year to Arizona. So social studies and science teachers have decided, like we do when we travel to Europe, to offer our students an experience to travel to national parks within our own country. So this would occur over our planned spring break for next year. Students will engage in fundraising to pay for the trip. And it's part of Explore America through EF Tours. We did upload the backup for that earlier today for you.
Thank you. Okay, motion for 9.2 and 9 through 9.4.
So made.
Second.
Discussion? And roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? She is not here outside, no problem. Uh, Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, personnel? Dr. Charlton, do you have anything for public?
I do not, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, we need a motion for 10.2 to 10.10.
A motion?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd not present for the vote. Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Grecio?
Okay, Ms. Salagi, I am happy to present to you and the Board of Education for the first time as Egg Harbor Township employees. We'll begin with Robin Hagan, a computer science and engineering teacher at the high school. John Lissy, teacher at the high school. Tricia Reed, nurse preschool. Brittany Coller, teacher preschool. Sarah DiStefano, teacher preschool. Bernadette Cutrell, preschool teacher. Brittany Markowitz, special education teacher preschool. Michelle Simon, special education teacher, preschool disabled. Brianna Halton, special education teacher, Swift Slave Ball complex. Steven Jensen, occupational therapist at Davenport. And Nino Maruso, special education teacher, multiple disabled, Miller School. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Policy? Mr. Ireland, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to give the Policy Committee report. We attended the meeting on Tuesday, June 7th, for about an hour and 10 minutes. The board members that attended were myself, Mr. Ireland, Mr. Seppi, Ms. Hyman, and Mr. Price. Administrators attending were Mr. Santilli and others was Ms. Halk Alco. Subjects that we discussed were Policy and Regulation 2431.4, Prevention and Treatment of Sports-Related Concussions and Head Injuries; Policy 9320, Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies; Bylaw 0164, Conduct of Board Meeting; Policy 2417, Student Intervention and Referral Services; Policy 4250, Hours and Days of Work; Policy 4411, Placement on Guide Step-Bus Drivers; Policy 5350, Student Suicide Prevention; Policy 5512, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying; Regulation 5600, Student Discipline Code of Conduct; Policy 7510, Use of Facilities; Regulation 9320, Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies. Conclusions that we reached from our meeting were Policy and Regulation 2431.4, Prevention and Treatment of Sports-Related Concussions and Head Injuries; and Policy 9320, Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies, were reviewed for second readings. Bylaw 0164, Conduct of Board Meeting was reviewed by the committee with minor updates being proposed for approval to update outdated language and information. Policy 2417, Student Intervention and Referral Service has been revised to mandated minor changes under NJAC 6 Alpha. Policy 4250, Hours and Days of Work; and Policy 4411, Policy on Guide Step-Bus Drivers are recommended edits to update employee categories, bus driver rates, and bus driver extra run rates. Policy 5550, Student Suicide Prevention has been revised with minor updates being proposed to update outdated language and terminology. Policy 5512, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying is a mandatory revision to align with the updates to the law provided in PL 2021, signed in January 2022. The revised language makes it clear that a staff member cannot investigate their supervisor or administrator. Regulation 5600, Student Discipline Code of Conduct has been revised with minor updates to align to current best practices, as well as edits from Policy 5512 related to the anti-bullying law. Policy 7510, Use of Facilities, was reviewed by the committee with minor updates being proposed to align current practices and the overall organization of the policy for the school community. Regulation 9320, Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies is a mandatory regulation that has been rewritten to align with NJAC 6 Alpha, which governs the development of policies and procedures for law enforcement operations in a school. All school districts must annually review, revise, when appropriate, and adopt a uniform state memorandum of agreement between education law official, uh, law enforcement officials. Policy 5514, Student Use of Vehicles was on the Policy Committee's agenda for both discussion and review. There are edits to the policy at this time as administration and administrative reviews and local policies related to the topic. We're going to have another meeting August 9th at 5 o'clock. Ms. Halk Alco, since Mr. Santilli's here, do you have anything to wrap up, any mistakes I made?
You made no mistakes. I just want to add one tiny clarification on number 1110, which is Regulation 5600. There's a small change on, if that's on page eight, letter H. The asterisk portion, which talks about suspensions for pre-K through 2, it just should be noted that preschool can only be suspended for violation of Zero Tolerance for Gunz Act. So that change will be made to the policy.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, so to our new employees, I think you got a real good view of what our district is all about. And I appreciate your patience as you're sitting there like, oh, boy, Ellen, what's longer? You may be dismissed. So go ahead, we won't feel bad. We won't feel bad. You heard everything from policy to finance to awards and all that. So you took in a whole lot. So I'll give you a test the next time I see you. But for now, go enjoy your night and celebrate your new job.
Thank you.
Okay. We need a motion for 11.2 to 11.13. Mrs. Hyman, motion, I need a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion.
Go ahead.
I just want to make a comment that I am thrilled to see that we have added Egg Harbor Township Recreation Department to Category 1. This is something that we have been trying to put through for quite a few years. It, what it does is it reinforces how we are really joining with the township in a lot of different programs and activities. And this is just another step forward to our relationship with Egg Harbor Township. And I really appreciate you. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno? Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
abstain.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Dr. Grecio?
Okay, so new business for the Board. I respectfully ask for your permission on behalf of Mr. Higbee, who represents the Egg Harbor Township EMS. Township has purchased a new rig for EMS, new ambulance. And he and I have had discussions about our brand, about our Eagle, and how important is that everyone in Egg Harbor Township feels that we are one, okay? And that we're trying to bring everyone together. And over the last couple of years, we've worked real hard to do that. So with the new ambulance coming onboard and getting ready to be, you know, painted in black and silver, he asked if they could use the Eagle to put on the side of the ambulance. So I wasn't going to answer that solely because I believe it's the Board of Education who, you know, represents the school district and has a say in this particular situation. Our brand is being trademarked, which once that is complete, and our attorney is in on that process right now, from that point on, permission has to be granted when any request does come in. But we're in a situation where the ambulance is going to be wrapped within the next week or so. And I am asking the Board to go ahead and give me permission to, or not give me permission, to answer Mr. Higbee about his request.
Go ahead.
I just would like to ask our attorney, are there any legal ramifications we need to be worried about?
Turn it on. So that is a conversation Dr. Grecio and I had. One of the things we talked about was, you know, if you open the door, let's say for one thing, are you opening a door for other things? Although we did talk about, I believe this is the ambulance that will be at the, or try to be at the school for sporting events and other activities, and be a representation of the district. So in those circumstances, it sounds like it's a very positive thing. And they are doing it the right way by getting permission to the district. And we would have to get permission for this to occur.
May we write something up special for them so that even though it is a precedent, we have reasoning behind the precedent?
We can certainly put something like that together. And again, it's not as if someone can just use the Eagle. It's something that we're very protective of. If anyone uses it even on social media, our IT person is on it. We make sure we're on top of that. So the fact that they're asking for it, I think, is the appropriate thing. And I think it's a goodwill gesture to the community if the Board's in support of it.
Question, comment? First of all, I think it's a great idea, and I would like to make a motion that we do approve it. And secondly, if something does come up again in the future, we'll take it case by case. And in this particular situation, I think it's fine, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll be in touch with Mr. Higbee tomorrow and let him know. Thank you.
Do we need a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Price. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Any other discussion? Okay.
The motion was, motion was Mr. Price's second, was who, I'm sorry? Mrs. Sullivan? Do the roll call. Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to call that item for the minutes, item number 12.2. We do still need action for item 12.1. Thank you.
Okay, item 12.1 is Egg Harbor Township's Police Department, EHT Municipal Alliance requests that the Egg Harbor Township School District lends them a bus for usage for EHT National Night Out, which will be on August 2nd, 2022.
Yes, we need a motion. That is something we typically do.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Just wanted to clarify, you said it was the bus for, say it one more time?
National Night Out.
And who's requesting the bus again?
The Police Department and EHT Municipal Alliance.
Okay.
Okay, roll call? Mrs. Bonjorno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Abstain.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Full business.
I can read it certainly, it's on the agenda. It's a firm HIV determination report, FMO 9, 2122, and DH 12, 2122, as discussed in executive session.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Bonjorno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Transfers and appointments. We need a motion for 14.1 and 14.2.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjorno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
May I vote on early childhood development? I abstain.
The motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan, does it need to be somebody else?
Yes, right, I do need to. With the board's agreement, we can substitute Mr. Ireland for Mrs.
I'm sorry about that confusion.
He was the second, so I need somebody else, please.
Second. Second.
Ms. Hyman will make the motion, second by Mr. Ireland. Thank you. And Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
And that was because of conflict for Mrs. Sullivan.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to introduce the Board of Education and the public, our new Director of Early Childhood Education, who oversee our expanding preschool program, Mr. John Tolan.
Congratulations, Mr. Tolan. Okay. New Jersey School Boards Association, Mr. Delabarka?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, board members. Most of all, I'm reporting this for your information, but I'm happy to share it with the public. I did participate in about three meetings representing, as president of the Atlanta County School Boards Association. Back on May 11th, many of you were in attendance at our county meeting. Mr. Jim Haston at High School was our guest speaker. He's an environmental science teacher, and he shared with all of those present and virtually the accomplishments he's had over many years at the high school, and all of the great stuff he's done has been paid for by grants, nothing out of budgets, and he's done a great job. He did a great job that night, and I was very proud to present him. We also introduced and recognized Mr. Ireland that evening as a new board member, so congratulations, Patrick. Mr. Ireland, who is county vice president, and myself, participated in the New Jersey School Boards Association virtual meeting last Monday. At that time, the executive director of the New Jersey School Boards Association, Dr. Larry Feinside, and the incoming executive director, Dr. Tim Purnell, were present. Dr. Feinside spoke about his years as executive director. He is retiring at the end of this month, and then he also gave us some information about the new director. And then Dr. Purnell spoke, and I was very impressed with his presentation. He's a former superintendent, principal, teacher, assistant principal up in North Jersey. I think he's the interim county superintendent in, I'm not sure, one of the North Jersey counties, but he's very impressive. From what I heard, I think he's going to move the state organization forward and continue recognizing the great work that school boards do around the state. Your county officers will be meeting this summer with the State School Board Association to plan next year's meetings. I asked all of the different county presidents, local presidents in the county, to get in contact with me if they have any ideas for future meetings, so I'm asking you board members, if you have any ideas for our future meetings for next year, please make sure you let me know what they are. So far, I have received no recommendations. So I had lunch today with our other vice president, Henry Goldsmith, and we also were having, struggling. We know we want to have pertinent ideas and topics that are interested in all of us, so we're going to try to do that for next school year. Also, I also participated in the county leaders from South Jersey in a virtual meeting with the state senator, Mr. Vin Gopal. He's a Senator Gopal, it might be Gopal, I'm not sure, is the chair of the Senate Education Committee. Very impressed by him. He is meeting with the school board leaders from all of the New Jersey counties because he wants to be aware of what our concerns are. So I met with, what I said was, South Jersey counties. I think that was last week also, and the topics he discussed included some of, I think you're going to be interested in. One was school security. Very good on that topic. He said that the police are being trained in school security in New Jersey, that New Jersey has the strongest gun laws, that the state will be reexamining all schools' security plans. So that's ahead of us. And he also said the state wants to be a partner in funding our security. So I think that's a good comment that he made. He also discussed extraordinary aid for special education. Right now, the state covers about 90% or so of our aid, and he's hoping that they will fully fund, fully fund that aid within the next two or three years. So that's a goal he has. The school start times has been a discussion around the state. Right now, it's not going to happen this September, it's all been put on hold for further discussion. So that was very good. I know we were happy to hear that down here with our new bell schedule, we didn't want to start another change at this time. So maybe in the future, that's going to happen. He discussed staff shortages, and he said that's a common trend around the entire state of New Jersey, probably nationally. He wanted us to know that they're doing away with ETA for teachers in order for teacher certification to move along more quickly. He also addressed the question of cost of substitute teachers. The president of the Northfield Board of Education asked that question, and she was very concerned because we've had to increase salaries for substitutes, as you know, Dr. Tolan, in order to keep or obtain substitutes. He did not know much, did not, was not aware of much of that topic, so he's going to look into it. And then another interesting topic was health and visit standards, which all of us were concerned about. He believes local school districts should write our curriculum, and he made that quite clear. So I was very impressed with him. I think the fact that he's going around to all of the counties to hear school board members is something that's not happened before, and he wants to be a leader in that area, so that's great. So thank you for your attention, everybody, but I'd still try to do my upstanding job as county leader and keep back to all of you all the time. And thank you, Barbara, for letting me speak.
Thank you for speaking. Yes. Go ahead.
I have a question on our board calendar. Mr. Price, I think you stated you were not having a curriculum, I mean, a July meeting. Are we having our July committee meetings? I have it on.
That's correct. No curriculum, and Mr. Ireland will probably speak on policy?
Correct. We're not having a policy meeting at all, unless it matters to you.
Okay, and how about?
With the transition, the business office, I would recommend a meeting. We can always cancel, but as of today, I would say yes, we would need that.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to clarify that so that I knew we still had ours. Thank you.
Okay. Going to open to the public. Anybody have anything to say?
Hi. Hi, Terri Alabarda, 206 Westwood Road, Egg Harbor Township. First, I want to thank all of you for an outstanding job you do. I know volunteering takes a lot of your time. Today, I'm here talking about an invisible population, our students with 504 plans. 504, for those of you who don't know what a 504 is, a 504 plan are formal plans that schools develop to give kids with disabilities the support they need. A 504 plan is a blueprint for how the school will support a student with a disability and remove barriers to learning. The goal is to give the student equal access at school. It prevents discrimination, it protects rights, it is a civil rights law, it gives students accommodations to be successful in school. When a 504 is not followed, we're taking away access to providing supports the child needs, whether it's academic, emotionally, or behaviorally. Their grades lower, and it decreases self-esteem. I've had problems this year with 504s. One daughter didn't get the support she needed, and her grades decreased, and she's not ready for the upcoming, well, she's ready for the upcoming year, but she's not any more prepared than she would have been had her 504 been followed. My other daughter had a problem with getting blamed for something she didn't do, and there were no accommodations during the process. I understand that the board is the what and not the how, but why I'm asking the board is to request additional PD for all staff to ensure that 504s are being followed. I'm also requesting that there's time for teachers, teams, or pods, to discuss how best to implement 504 plans for their students, and time during the year to assess if the 504 is helping the student or needs to be revised. Possibly maybe even look into students with 504s, they might need to be assessed to see how they would learn best. These students with 504s, they don't need an IEP. They do not need to be tested for special education, but their disabilities are just as important as our students with IEPs, and we need to do better for them. You know, I thoroughly, you know, love the motto, embrace, engage, and educate, but that's for all students, and we need to do better. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Hello. I didn't realize I only have three minutes, so I'm going to have to talk really fast. My name's Kim Barnes. I have a daughter at Miller.
Your address?
Name and address. Your name and address.
Oh, my name's Kim Barnes. I live 6061 West Jersey Avenue. I have a fifth grade daughter at Miller School. I don't even know where to begin with this three minutes, but I just recently found out that she's been getting bullied all year. We had a class trip yesterday.
Ms. Barnes, have you gone through the chain of command?
I have.
Would you have a discussion with Dr. Grugio after?
I could. I just wanted to make the board aware of the situation.
So, Ms. Barnes, I just want to jump in. I'm the attorney for the district, and I just wanted to say I'm not going to stop you from speaking, I'm actually going to ask them to stop the timer right now while I'm talking, but I just wanted to say that, just so you're aware, anytime you're talking about an individual child, although you don't have to follow privacy laws because you're the parent, the board is bound by privacy laws, so what that means is, we can't respond, the board cannot respond to your comments or engage in a discussion regarding them, so I wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, and also that we do have a procedure for the chain of command, so if there is a concern with bullying, we do have an anti-bullying coordinator for the district who is our assistant superintendent, and then if you're not happy with that decision, you would typically go to the superintendent of schools, which is Dr. Grugio to my left here. But I'm going to let you continue talking, but I just wanted to make sure that you are clear about that before we went ahead and.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So I did speak to Mr. Battersby and a couple people at the school who were very attentive to me this morning. However, I'm very upset, and when it happened yesterday, all the kids ran up to me and said, you're the greatest mom ever, this girl's been bothering us all year. My issue here is I just want you guys to maybe reconsider policy. I understand you have people in the schools that are maybe specializing in the harassment or the bullying. However, these group of kids were too afraid to go to that person at Miller, to even tell them. So to me, that's upsetting because I don't want to wake up and my daughter be dead tomorrow, and I understand that you guys have policy and procedure, and I have to follow them, and I have, and I'm waiting for them to get back to me, but I'm just, I fear for my daughter. And I just want to make sure that even though you have the anti-bullying, the people that are doing it need to understand that the kids aren't going to come to them and say, such and such is bullying me, because they're afraid to do that. So somehow, you got to get them. My daughter never told me, all year. I'm just finding out now, they're calling her fat, they're talking about her behind. I mean, I don't know what else to do. I just, I wanted to make the board aware of it. Like I said, and I'm hoping, and I love EHT School District, I want to make that clear. I'm happy that the board is, you know, even listening to me right now, and that's all. Thank you.
Mrs. Barnes, somebody will be in touch with you tomorrow, okay? You leave your information with Mrs. Anaya, okay? All right. We need to go back into executive session. I need a motion.
Second.
Kevin, it's for personnel. For personnel. Ms. Hyman?
Mrs. Sullivan.
Down that way. No, just for discussion, no action.